I'd like to call the City Council meeting of September 11, 2024 to order. And I'd like to begin by pausing a moment of silence for the in memorance of the people who lost their lives 23 years ago in New York and Pennsylvania. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this world where the routine is served.
Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call?
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa.
Present.
The next item is the video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 15, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, September 16th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
I need to do one thing out of order. I don't think I reported out of our closed session. And so we did have a closed session at 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock, and I'm reporting out that there's no action was taken. Next item?
The next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Schaefer, second by Councilmember Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Next item.
Next item we have is presentation number four, which is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing firefighter appreciation month and California firefighters' Memorial Day, and we have representatives from Sacramento Metro Fire here tonight.
And I've asked Councilmember Schaefer to handle this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Metro Fire Engine Crew, 21 Crew, Captain Brian Dupertis, Captain Aaron Nguyen, Engineer Michael Duff, and firefighter Adam Rosen to the podium to accept the proclamation, please. Welcome. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then you'll have an opportunity to comment if you like after, okay? All right. Okay. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing firefighter appreciation month and California and California firefighters' Memorial Day. Whereas firefighters play a vital role in the city protecting the well health and well-being of community members, preventing, preparing for emergencies, and educating the public about fire safety, and the role of a firefighter requires commitment, courage, willingness to put forth their lives on the line when emergencies strike. And this day is no more comparative than that particular statement right there. These men, 23 years ago, raced into a building that was known could collapse. Whereas the demands of firefighting are accompanied with by both personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly accept to protect the lives of others. And October 12, 2024, hundreds of firefighters and their families, along with their fellow Californians, will join to honor the brave firefighters who've lost their lives in the line of duty during 2024 Annual California Firefighters Memorial Day in Sacramento. And Sacramento Metropolitan Fire assures the well-being of the Citrus Heights residents and businesses throughout their tireless work of its staff and crew among its four local firehouses, Station 21, Station 23, Station 27, Station 28. Whereas Metro Fire dedicates countless hours to service of the Citrus Heights community through critical emergency response, risk reduction programs, community education, and public education events. Whereas the city partners with Metro Fire to execute every day safeguards that go above and beyond to carry out exceptional celebrations. Now there being resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize the month of September 2024 as firefighter appreciation month, and October 12, 2024, as a day to commemorate firefighters' Memorial Day, and urge all citizens to recognize firefighters who make sacrifices to serve the public. And I certainly would invite my council members to make comments if they'd like. Portion.
As you all know, I am a big firefighter, older sister. My youngest brother is a firefighter in Gardenvale, and I have a lot of respect for folks who will run into a burning building when others run the opposite way. And you guys have offered, you know, some fire education to my oldest child when he, during COVID, decided to set our bathroom on fire doing a science experiment with alcohol and a candle and burned down our toilet paper hoard. We learned a lot that day. I also got a lesson from you all as well. I deeply appreciate everything that you do and so glad to be able to recognize you in this way.
Thank you.
Mary Jane, anything?
Just want to thank you for all you do to keep us safe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've lived through two house fires. One was when I was a little girl. My brother said it must have been related to your brother. And the other was when my house burned down, I was in veterinary school, and I lost everything, including my favorite cat. And I tell you, the firefighters who put that fire out, I had no insurance. They came back and they rebuilt my little house trailer on their own dime in their spare time. And I, to this day, thank them. They're in my will, and they, and I know firefighters do everything from their heart, and they, you have such a connection to the community when you work that it's felt. And we know you feel it with our community, and we do appreciate our firefighters.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Yes. Well, thank you for all those accolades, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Jones, Mr. Feeney, citizens. On behalf of the men and women of Metro Fire, I would like to accept the proclamation, and it's very much appreciated. With that, I would like to introduce you to Captain Dupertis. He is the acting battalion chief of Battalion 13 on the Seashift. So he has oversight of the previously mentioned stations that you hit on, as well as the Orange Vale and Fair Oaks stations. So I'd like him to say a few words, as this is his battalion.
Council, Vice Mayor, thank you very much for this proclamation. As you know, on this day, it is especially poignant to be receiving this. 23 years ago, almost 3,000 people lost their lives in an attack on the Twin Towers. This event shaped the future of our nation and the future of the fire service. Firefighters from Metro Fire and the Sacramento area responded and were on the ground helping New York and our nation heal from this awful day. In the days following 9/11, we came together as a nation, and we realized we were stronger together. Today, we at Metro Fire continue to stand united with those around us, such as the City of Citrus Heights and Citrus Heights PD, in order to protect the community we serve. We take the example of those brave 343 firefighters who lost their lives to save others and use it as inspiration to continually serve our community. Thank you for this recognition, and thank you for helping us never forget. I will also point out that on October 12th at the memorial, we will be placing two names on there, firefighter Anthony Ben Alicia, and also Captain Randy Gross, who was a responder on Task Force 7 to 9/11 with his dog Dusty and was part of the search efforts. So it's very meaningful for us. Thank you very much.
Great. Good on the presenting. Do a picture. She good?
You guys are good. You're all good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item, please.
Next item is presentation number five, recognition of Tansu Karadmir on the occasion of his appointment as the Citrus Heights Postmaster.
Is Tansu here? There he is. I didn't see you when I walked by. My eyes are so bad. This is recognition of Tansu Karadmir. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, ma'am.
On the occasion of his appointment as the Citrus Heights Postmaster. And I personally wanted to do this presentation because I attended his swearing-in, and it was a memorable event for close-knit, and so I was very happy to attend. And this is presented on behalf of the City of Citrus Heights, on the occasion of his appointment as Citrus Heights Postmaster. The City of Citrus Heights is honored to welcome Tansu Karadmir as the newly appointed Citrus Heights Postmaster of the United States Postal Service. The United States Post Office of Citrus Heights provides essential mail delivery services that help people stay in contact and carry out a variety of business operations which promote a connected community and prosperous economy. Postmaster Karadmir oversees nearly 80,000 pieces of mail delivered daily, over 34,000 delivery points, and 115 employees, including my mail ma'am, Renee, who I love. The city hereby congratulates Postmaster Karadmir on the occasion of his swearing-in ceremony. You want to say anything? We know you give first-class service. How's that?
That was great, Ms. Ray. Just wanted to thank you for having me out here. We are striving to do the best service that we can to our community, and we're looking forward, working with you to improve the delivery of the Citrus Heights. I'm very honored to be here. And as we all know, with 9/11, I was not even, I mean, I was alive at that time, but I was not very understanding the Constitution and everything, and what I saw on TV was very scary for me. Now I understand we gather together, and we are strong together, and we'll do anything to protect our community here at Citrus Heights. We are here to serve the city, and we are open, we have open doors for our customers, and we do see a lot of customers out there. If you do have any questions, I have an open-door policy, so please stop by. Thank you.
In case you didn't hear that, if you have any questions, he has an open-door policy. So, because this is televised, I wanted to make sure that the YouTube channel got to hear that.
Please.
Would anyone else like to comment? Councilmember Middleton, anything?
Yes, absolutely. Welcome to our community, and thank you so much for joining our little family.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Yeah, ditto. I wasn't able to make your swearing-in, so welcome and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, I was remiss in missing your ceremony. I had another obligation, but welcome, and we look forward to great service from the post office.
Thanks.
And we get a photo op now. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number six, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming September 15 through 21st, 2024 as National Forensic Science Week.
And I have asked Councilmember Lopez Taft to handle this proclamation.
All right. Let's first of all invite Danielle Stevenson, the senior crime scene property and evidence specialist, to the podium to accept the proclamation. Well, welcome. And again, you've seen this done. We'll read the proclamation and then ask for your comments and come down and take a picture. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming September 15 through 21st, 2024 as National Forensic Science Week. Whereas the third week in September 2024 is recognized as National Forensic Science Week, a time to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of forensic science to the pursuit of justice, and whereas forensic science service providers address critical questions in both civil and criminal investigations and trials across the United States, offering scientific conclusions based on forensic evidence that are vital to the resolution of these cases. And whereas forensic science service providers work in partnership with federal agencies to build and maintain criminal databases related to latent prints, DNA, and other key information critical to solving and preventing crimes, and collaborate with other federal, state, and local agencies to ensure the safety and security of the public. And whereas forensic science service providers serve a crucial role in the criminal justice system, providing scientific information that aids investigators and officers of the court in uncovering the truth and administering justice. And whereas the City of Citrus Heights crime scene property of evidence specialists are highly trained in the collection, preservation, and reconstruction of physical evidence from crime scenes, ensuring that this evidence is preserved for future prosecution, conviction of the correct perpetrators, and the exoneration of individuals who have been wrongfully accused, thereby upholding the integrity of the justice system in the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights declares the week of September 15 through 21st, 2024 as National Forensic Science Week, in honor of the men and women whose diligence, professionalism, and expertise are invaluable to the overall police department team as they work tirelessly to keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you. Do we have any council comments?
Yeah. Thanks so much for all that you do.
Comment?
Yes, of course. A comment. Yes, thank you very much for all the hard work you put in here. It is critical that what you do helps us solve crimes, so thank you so much. Really appreciate that.
It's not a glamorous job, but it's so essential to catching the crooks, you know? But I think we have Abby to thank for NCIS making it more glamorous. And so it's, you know, they have, University of Florida has forensic, animal forensics, which you could do it online. So I don't know if it's something that, I always thought if I had eyesight, I would do it. Kind of fun, had your head in a microscope.
Would you like to make some comments?
I just appreciate you guys acknowledging us. Yeah, we work hard, we look tirelessly, but we love our job. It's fun. You know, we can't make it look fancy and fun, but it's fancy and fun to us, so we appreciate it.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, and city manager, thank you for honoring them. This team that we have is fantastic. We're extremely proud of the work they do, and they come to work every day with a smile, whether they've been up all night on a case or not. And they, they come, they work hard, they work great as a team, and it's a team of three full-time, and one, we just got one new part-timer working with us. And they also do our property and evidence tech-related stuff. So that means any of the evidence that's booked, and they manage that as well, and the team is fantastic. And so I'm very honored to be here with them, and thank you very much for honoring them tonight.
Well, thank you, and we'll come down for our picture.
The next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you are called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda.
I have two speakers for items not on the agenda. First is David Shelton.
My name is David Shelton, and it's always nice to follow the honoring of people for weekly things and get people photographs and that. It sets a good tone for the meeting. I have spoken several times in a row. I'm not finding fault with the council or the city. What I'm trying to do is give you my thoughts, because if you don't speak up, you're never heard, of what I think we should consider. I'm talking tonight about drones, not the ones that have specific latitude and longitude in Ukraine and latitude and longitude in Russia, and I sent them a smart bomb. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about small helicopters where a police officer can sit on the ground and monitor it, remove from the 30 feet, 300 feet, cameras, and they can see what's going on, and they can provide a valuable oversight. When I worked for the Forest Service, I got to ride in helicopters, and it's amazing what you can see from the air. Things that are not in the ground, you can't see them, but in the air, half mile away, you see something, and you can be on it. I think it's the way that law enforcement is going to go, because we've seen a lot of activity lately, particularly in B-Cat, B-Caf, Texas, where they had this shooting, and they used a drone in their manhunt there. And then I think, I don't know if it's one drone per shift for the police department, or maybe three drones per shift, or maybe they could have something like the Fourth of July. I'm still up on fireworks, because I think the New Year's is going to be something we haven't seen. I mean, the Fourth of July here was something else, just, it was, I sat in my driveway, and I watched fireworks for 20 minutes, go 200 feet in the air, and fly over houses and into the greenbelt, and I was really worried that my house would be burned down by these yahoos shooting fireworks into the greenbelt. Got to give credit to Park and Rec, they came in and they trimmed everything down to where the ground is stubble. So right now, we're not going to get any fires there. What I think, too, is that drones allow you a perspective, not only for fireworks. People don't want to interfere with people who are lighting fireworks. With a drone, you can sit off some 300 feet in the air, look down, see where they're coming from, see what they're doing, seeing where they're getting the fireworks, and you don't have to interfere. Plus, you can make a movie of it, and that gives you something you can put in court and prove that. That's why I think it's the way of the future for a lot of law enforcement things. Pursuits in Citrus Heights, we don't have many of those, but sometimes when you have a helicopter, like in Sacramento, following or the CHP following, it's much safer, because they can see where they're going. And if they get out of their car and run away like they always do, you can see where they're going. And also, it's good for, I think, for public gatherings. I mean, Sunday, Sunday, Fun Days, Fun Day, Sunday Fun Day is coming, and that would be something where you could observe the people and see if there were any problems developing, and respond quickly to potential problems. Not saying we're going to have problems, but it gives you an eye in the sky that you don't have without a drone. Cost, I have no idea what the cost is. We have got a lot of military equipment, the big tanks, I call them, that we purchased, they were given to us by the government, that we can do something there. Family disputes, a lot of family disputes, you go, and that's a very dangerous thing for a police officer. With a drone, you can park the drone over the house, watch it for half an hour, maybe an hour, see what's going on, see what's happening. That'll give you an insight into what to do when you go in. You don't walk in blind, and I think that's really a benefit of drones. And then there's also the idea of red light cameras, or when we have, we're starting now to get intersections where we're having more accidents, and drones would allow you to sit off and watch and see what's happening in the intersection, and maybe save a life or two. Conclusion, I will keep bringing up what I think should be considered, because I look at the end of the session, and it says, "Members of council making suggestions," and there's nobody making suggestions. So there's got to be things that they're thinking about. Anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, David. Good timing. The next speaker I have is Natalie Price, if you can find her.
All right. Hello. Thank you. Hello, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, and neighbors. It's been a while since I got to stand up here, I believe prior to summer, so the first thing on my notes here is, say thank you for sending you to NUSA. Thank you for sending me to NUSA. I was fortunate enough to go last year, and I brought back Good Neighbor Week, which is coming up here, and that is extremely exciting. I'll touch on that in a moment. This year, I didn't bring back a big project, not an engagement event. I brought back a question, and it was poised to me in the form of a survey in a classroom at NUSA. What is your city known for? I sat there. First thing that came into my head was, we're close to Sacramento, but that's not what we're known for. And then the Sunrise Mall popped in my head, and that's, that's the eyesore that everybody yells about. That's the half-vacant building that we're all striving to get full. I don't want to be known for that. So it was, what are we known for? And I brought the question back to Reach, and Reach sat there with the same answers. And then we started talking about our neighborhoods, and how strong our city is because of our neighborhoods, and the way that that's embedded in the fabric of our community. And then how in our neighborhoods, we have great new trails, and we have a park system that is fluid throughout our city. And we started talking about what our city can be. And Reach is going to hold a strategic retreat so that we can further discuss what we want to be known for, and how we as residents can support such a vision. And I wanted to share that that's what we brought back from NUSA this year. I think that that is exciting. But back to Good Neighbor Week. Good Neighbor Week is coming up, September 28th to October 4th, and every for a police officer. With a drone, you can park the drone over the house, watch it for half an hour, maybe an hour, see what's going on, see what's happening. That'll give you an insight into what to do when you go in. You don't walk in blind, and I think that's really a benefit of drones. And then, there's also the idea of red light cameras, or when we have, we're starting now to get intersections where we're having more accidents, and drones would allow you to sit off and watch and see what's happening in the intersection, and maybe save a life or two. Conclusion, I will keep bringing up what I think should be considered, because I look at the end of the session, and it says, "Members of council making suggestions," and there's nobody making suggestions. So there's got to be things that they're thinking about. Anyway, thank you all.[458.56][458.56][bell]
Thank you, David. Good timing. The next speaker I have is Natalie Price, if you can find her.
All right. Hello. Thank you. Hello, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, and neighbors. It's been a while since I got to stand up here, I believe prior to summer, so the first thing on my notes here is, say thank you for sending you to NUSA. Thank you for sending me to NUSA. I was fortunate enough to go last year, and I brought back Good Neighbor Week, which is coming up here, and that is extremely exciting. I'll touch on that in a moment. This year, I didn't bring back a big project, not an engagement event. I brought back a question, and it was poised to me in the form of a survey in a classroom at NUSA. What is your city known for? And I sat there. First thing that came into my head was, we're close to Sacramento, but that's not what we're known for. And then, the Sunrise Mall popped in my head, and that's, that's the eyesore that everybody yells about. That's the half vacant building that we're all striving to get full. I don't want to be known for that. So it was, what are we known for? And I brought the question back to Reach, and Reach sat there with the same answers. And then, we started talking about our neighborhoods, and how strong our city is because of our neighborhoods, and the way that that's embedded in the fabric of our community. And then, how in our neighborhoods, we have great new trails, and we have a park system that is fluid throughout our city. And we started talking about what our city can be. And Reach is going to hold a strategic retreat, so that we can further discuss what we want to be known for, and how we as residents can support such a vision. And I wanted to share that that's what we brought back from NUSA this year. I think that that is exciting. But back to Good Neighbor Week. Good Neighbor Week is coming up, September 28th to October 4th, and every resident right now can go to www.chgoodneighbor.com. You will be able to nominate a good neighbor, recognize them for what they do to make our lives better in this community. Come September 28th, you will be able to register an Act of Neighboring. That button's a dead button right now. You can also learn about Good Neighbor Week, the different activities we'll be offering. We have Good Neighbor Saturday. We're still striving to get a citywide yard sale. This year, we have on our website, a site where everybody can put in their address if they're participating, so everybody can see where the sales will be. We also have Fun Friday, which will be October 4th, and Park Oaks Neighborhood Association or Area, excuse me, is hosting a movie night at Brooktree Park, and the whole city is invited to come watch The Nightmare Before Christmas. So please think about participating in Good Neighbor Week. And while I have a minute and 30 seconds left, I want to just thank all of the Reach board members, all of the board members of the neighborhood areas, and all of the many, many, many community volunteers that make up our city. There are times that our residents don't understand we're all volunteers. We're out here giving of our own time, often our own resources, and taking that time from our families, just so that we can help improve quality of life here in Citrus Heights. And sometimes, we're met with people that don't understand that we're volunteers, and I just want them to be a little kind. And if they don't think that we are doing the job the way they would like to do it, I offer them to come and share our meetings, share our energy, and volunteer with us. So please be kind, Citrus Heights, and thank you.
Would you give us that website again that you sent?
Yes.
Thank you, Natalie.
And Reach will have a booth at Sunday Fun Day, so if you have questions, come on by and say hello.
Is Sunday Fun Day in that week of Good Neighbor Week?
It is the week before.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's all the speakers I have. Do you have any written speakers for items not on the agenda?
I had one that was submitted, but they put Agenda Item Number 15, and we don't have an Item 15, so I didn't know if they were in the audience tonight. Simone Johnson. But staff has reached out to them regarding their comments, and so I just wanted to see if they were here for the meeting.
You can't get a clue from, is it written?
It was regarding solid waste and for community members to aid in the Tier One and Tier Two Food Generator food recovery.
You could read it, because it's not on the agenda.
Mm-hmm. But it was just a recommendation to add a no-cost sign-up for community members to aid in the Tier One and Tier Two Food Generator food recovery requirements with measures to support contact of approved community members. And so, we've put them in contact with general services staff.
Okay. Sounds good. So I'll save the other speaker sheets for the items as they come up, and let's just move on to the next item.
The next item we have is a special item, number seven, selection of mayor and vice mayor.
I have one speaker, Al Fox. Do you want to speak to this, or do you want to wait to the city council vacancy?
City Council Vacancy, please.
Okay. Pleasure of the council.
I'd like to nominate Jana Karpitsky-Costa for mayor and vice mayor, Jane, Jane, Jane Taft.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Any comments? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Unanimous. Thank you.[869.20][869.20][applause] Oh, I don't care what you do with that sign. Just don't make me Brett Daniels. Do I have to move?
If you want to.
No, I'm going to stay right here. I did a not jumping up and down for those photos, so we'll just kind of, okay.
The next item, Al, do you want to come and speak?
Are you going to call it officially on the, before I come up? You're going to put it on the recording officially before I come up?
I couldn't hear what you said.
The next item is item number eight, and the subject is city council vacancy. And I do have a brief staff presentation, so I can give a brief staff presentation on this item, and then...
Do you want to hear the staff presentation, or do you want to make your comment?
No, I'll wait for the staff presentation. I think it would be appropriate.
Okay. Okay. You'll be right up after that, then.
So this item tonight is as a result of Brett Daniels' resignation. That was effective August 31st, and so this created a city council vacancy for District One seat. Pursuant to California Government Code, it sets forth the procedures in the event of a city council vacancy, and states the city council shall, within 60 days from the commencement of the vacancy, either fill the vacancy by appointment, or call a special election to fill the vacancy. And I'd just like to note, Citrus Heights' next regularly scheduled election will be this November, on November 5th, 2024, for the purposes of electing two council members representing Districts One and Three. So since District One seat is already scheduled to be filled at the November election, it is not necessary for the city council to call a special election for this purpose. The seat could remain vacant until the November election, until that person is seated. The other option is, if the council desires to fill by vacancy, the individual would only hold office until December 11th, at which time, the successful District One candidate from the November election would be seated. And with that, the staff recommendation is to review the options for filling the vacancy and provide direction to staff. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of Amy? Okay, Al, you're up.
I think I'm officially up to number nine, if you were not, Jana, I'm number two.
First of all, congratulations to Jana and to Mary Jane Taft for your appointments to your positions.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you. I want to address just simply the, the idea of appointing somebody for this short period of time, only because of the burden upon staff if we do so. And I think Councilmember Schaefer and I both understand what it is to testify and talk before a board regarding letting things remain open, unfilled, when it's unnecessary to do so, so that the people of the responsible or responding district have a say. And we did that in the case of the death of former mayor, council member, and our first district, San Juan Unified School District Board Member, Steve Miller. And I urge you to consider what we did then in this consideration here. Trying to put 105 days of work on a new person requires a whole lot more work of staff than I think is necessary. And so, as you're considering this, I don't believe there's any advantage to appointing somebody. You are four very capable members of this council, who, working together, I'm sure you can come up with a majority vote on the next, I believe it's six, meetings we have between now and the end of the year, when you exclude Thanksgiving and Christmas. I think that appointing a new person to try to step in now and to take any assignments to particular boards, commissions, and committees, that you all know how cumbersome those can be with your own schedules, and with your work schedules, and how much time it takes to prepare for those, I think it does a disservice to the person that you appoint. And then, you have the problem of trying to get somebody on board, get them into the pay structure, getting them into all of the paperwork necessary for such a short period of time. And to appoint anyone who's a candidate for the position to replace former member Daniels would be inappropriate also. So I urge you to just take for a few moments, consider, and simply go with what we have tonight. The four of you, fully representing the city, the future of the city and our current issues, putting apart any of the other things that go on around you, and make sure that from now until the election, that we have the time for the candidates to run for office, we have the time for those candidates to meet with the people in their district, and we have the time for them to present themselves as a viable candidate and to fill that slot. And don't put it on the burden of staff to have someone temporarily, who's not going to be able to do much in the short period of time that you have before you. Thank you very much for your time, and wish you well.
Thank you, Al. Discussion time.
Well done.
The time?
Discussion time.
Oh, discussion.
Who wants to start? Portia?
I'll start. Mr. Fox, I deeply appreciate your comments, and I have to say, I wholeheartedly, I agree. I think that between the four of us, barring, you know, anything catastrophic, we can, we can handle this, and I would hope that my colleagues would all agree, and waiting to see what else you all have to say.
I agree. I see no point in, in appointing anyone right now.
Mary Jane?
Yeah, I also concur with my colleagues here. There truly is no point, and we have a great election underway and viable candidates for the district, so I think we should, we should chug along just fine.
And I want to say, too, that all of Brett Daniels' appointments had alternates, and so Portia's the alternate to his appointment to the Air Quality Board, and she's taken on the Air Quality Management District as the alternate. I've taken on Sacramento Transportation Authority as the alternate, and Councilmember Schaefer is doing the RT, Regional Transit, alternate, so all of the boards are covered. I did, was a committee of one when I went to the Quality of Life Committee. I was a committee of one, because he was on that with me, but that's okay. I don't think we'll be having any other committee meetings, so we're good to go. So I think I agree that all four of us can, can handle it. We're, we're pretty good together.
Well, then, if that's the case, I'll move that we keep the seat vacant for District One.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Middleton, second by Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, isn't that good? Mary Jane Taft. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Next item, please.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Make sure there's no more speakers. I'll start with Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, we'll start with today and work our way backwards. This week, today, I went to the 9/11 Remembrance hosted by the Sylvan Cemetery District and attended that with Councilmember Schaefer. It was a very moving ceremony, and we recognized our first responders there. On 9/9, there was a community meeting hosted by our local, our state assembly member and state senator, a very robust conversation that I was happy to listen in on. 9/6, I attended the Sacramento Regional Justice Center annual gala with our current mayor and vice mayor, which was a lovely time, and we got to reconnect with a lot of folks throughout the region, as well as hear compelling stories about why it is so important that we continue to support the work that the Regional Justice Center does. 9/5, I was at the 15th Annual Multicultural Business and Career Expo, which is hosted by Russian-American media. The mayor and I were there, and we had a lot of fun. We gave out a proclamation to recognize one of our local restaurants, and it was just really interesting to see the diverse number of participants that were there in the community, you know, talking about business, talking about how we can better be stronger and support them. And on Labor Day, 9/2, I volunteered at Loaves and Fishes to help feed our unhoused population, which was very eye-opening, and I recognize that by standing there, it was my first time doing it, there are so many individuals who look just like the people sitting in this room. They're young, they're old, they're different, some of the folks couldn't even speak English. And it was really impactful for me to recognize the color of what homelessness looks like in our community, and I want to make sure that as we move forward as a community, we recognize that, that it can happen to any of us, and we need to make sure that we're supporting these kind of programs. And that is my report.
It's nice that you went to Loaves and Fishes. That's, that's nice. Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So it's been a busy week. On, right after Labor Day, I attended the RT introduction of the low floor, low floor new, brand-new cars for RT. I figured, well, if I want to sit on the RT board, I'm going to actually use RT, so I used RT to get down to this meeting, and I found that if I came from Citrus Heights, it would take me about an hour and 40 minutes to get down there, so I actually drove down to the Sunrise Station and took the station, and it only took 37 minutes to get down to 13th Street. So, but it was a very enjoyable ride for a brand-new car. They're made by Siemens right here in Sacramento, and they're just, what a huge, huge upgrade in, in vehicles. And there's, we're on track for replacing a lot of the cars on RT, so it'll be a much more comfortable ride. So that was on 9/3. On 9/5, I had a, a meeting down at SACOG to discuss the, I'm sure everybody's going to be really thrilled about this. It's a California road charge there. We're going to be looking at charging by mile, based on, and they're, based on how many miles you drive, your, most of it's going to be collected through your registration. So your registration will be going up, but this will augment, according to our report there, we're about $7.5 billion a year short in maintaining the roads of the state, and this will go to enhancing revenues for that. They're about to rip, this is a study done by Caltrans, they'll wrap that up by the end of the year and prepare for the legislature for next year. So also, so following that, I had a meeting down at SACOG with, where, where CARB is again reviewing our greenhouse gas goals, incredibly challenging goals, really, really difficult to meet these goals, and so SACOG has to come up with a plan on what we're going to do if we can't meet the goals. And unfortunately, the state is holding SB1 funding hostage, so all the gas tax money will be tied to lowering vehicle miles traveled, thereby lowering greenhouse gases. So really, another challenging time, it's already been really challenging at SACOG, but it is going to be exceedingly more challenging as we get more and more aggressive towards, towards reducing greenhouse gases. I attended, on 9/9, it's just the Reach Board meeting, I did learn that Area Two and Area Six are merging. You know, when the city set up the neighborhoods in 1999, they set up 10 different neighborhoods. We've seen Seven, Eight, and Nine merge. We're now seeing Two and Six merge, and I kind of feel like, okay, well, if we're all going to merge, why don't we just get rid of the neighborhoods? Because what's the point? We're all going to be one neighborhood anyway, so I just, I think that that is, that's a disservice to, to the community to combine neighborhoods, but that's my own opinion. Reach can do what it likes. So then, on 9/9, I attended the community meeting with Josh Hoover and Senator Roger Nilo. Amazing, this room was full. There were chairs in the very back over there. This room was completely packed. What a great turnout, and, and it was really great to, to hear all, all the questions and, and comments from, from folks and concerns about where the state, where we're headed with the state and what we can do to, to cope with some of the laws that are coming out of downtown. So, and then finally, this morning, I was with Portia Middleton, very moving. I would certainly encourage you next year to, to attend the 9/11 Remembrance. We did this at Sylvan Cemetery, very well-done presentation, and, and a lot of soul-searching and prayer coming from around. And my concern certainly is, is that we, you know, we become complacent in our lives, and we sort of can become a little lackadaisical when we start looking at what threats we're facing in the world. The world's increasing more dangerous, and we have to be, I don't want to run into that same thing when I fell to 9/11. I was standing in the airport in Sacramento, flying up to Salt Lake City, when the first plane hit the towers, and I was standing in line, and there were monitors there, and I thought, what the heck is going on? We got some kind of air traffic control problem, or we got, then I watched the second airplane fly into the towers, and I just was stunned. How could this possibly happen? How did this happen here? How are we so surprised by this? And I, and I just don't, I want to just caution folks, as we get more and more comfortable in our world, we have to be challenged with understanding that this is, the world... in our world, we have to be challenged with understanding that this is, the world is a rough-and-tumble place. I had the opportunity to serve in the military, and I traveled around the world. We are very, very insulated in this country, and, and the world is a rough-and-tumble place. We are, we often forget that there's people that get killed in the, in other countries for no reason, for, for port, almost. So just, let's just be on our guard, let's, you see something, say something. So with that, I will leave us with that comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Mary Jane Taft?
All right, I went to several of the similar events, the Hoover and Nilo Community Meeting, again, very, very well-attended. Please, please get involved. You know, we, we want to see our chamber as full for our regular meetings, because what we discuss here affects you every day, and so I just encourage you to have the same enthusiasm for our local, local issues as we do on state-level issues. We also attended the, together the SAC Family Justice Center event, very well-done, as always, just to remind us, there are other vulnerable people in the community, and what they do with domestic violence and, and people who are suffering from sexual violence is amazing work, and very, very well-done program. I also attended the Multicultural Business and Career Expo. It was my first time, even though it's been going on for 15 years, I thought, this is in my backyard, and what a great gathering of folks in the business community and individuals looking for jobs. You know, there are still so many jobs to be had, and you just need to, you need to show up and be in the room, and that's, that's what I like to tell young people looking for, for work, and those professionals who are looking for work again. That morning, though, was my most important meeting, I believe, and that was with my Chamber Government Affairs, where we talked about the state propositions. What, what, how much money did they want, and where did they want to spend it, and do I agree with that, and how is that going to affect our business community? I encourage every one of you to start reading your ballot propositions and the measures that will be in your ballot. We are going to have a hefty, hefty document to review. The documents are published right now online, so please look those up, read them for yourselves, read them in context, please don't just read the summary statements, because these, those can be very misleading. I'll leave it at that. Please read and do your homework. This is the best homework you will ever do for yourselves, because it has multi-year, millions and millions of dollars attached to these votes, so please know how you are voting and what that affects. The other meeting that I failed to mention last time was another very important meeting to me, which is our, our two-by-two with the San Juan Unified School District. Because our community is very concerned about our children and families, this is one of my favorite meetings to attend. We got an update from the superintendent and her staff of their new strategic planning goals, there are four goals, and, and how the, the new school year started off. It sounds like we have a great increase in Citrus Heights of enrollees, and that is something to celebrate in our community. I think it's super-important when we start bringing back our students back to Citrus Heights schools, that's the way we get to thrive, that's the way we bring them back into the fold of all the, the wonderful things that our neighborhoods do, is bringing them back to the school, and having them come out and, and work with our teachers in our schools and, and share their talents and, and passions for our community as well, so that is my update.
Thank you very much. We're all busy, we're all so busy, but we do attend some of the common things together, which is good. When, when people see us as a group, I think that's good. So I did, too, attend the Multicultural Business Expo, was my first time there. I'm trying to learn Russian, so I think I impressed them a little bit with my pig Russian. And I, I think for me, I did present the proclamation to Caravan Restaurant, which is an Uzbeki cuisine that's up on Sunrise and Antelope, yep, right around there, across from, across from that, yep, it's there, on the northeast corner. And, but to me, the, the big highlight of it was this, this Russian guy who sang "God Bless America." It, it started in my toes, and it went all the way up, I'm still chills thinking about it. That guy was incredible. And in the background, they had, you know, a picture of America, and it was, it was just all, so, yeah, he's, it was, that was nice. Inspirational. I did, on the same note, go to the Polish Festival, which I've been broadcasting, on that Saturday, met a couple there, because I had extra ticket, food tickets, and I says, here, because I've had enough, and they, and she says, oh, we just went to the Romanian Festival, and when you think about the wonderful cultures we have in our vicinity, how we celebrate, you know, just, just not, it didn't used to be that way when I was a kid, it's just nice to be able to celebrate the multicultural business center, these, all these various festivals that celebrate the various cultures, it's just, it's just great. It's nice to introduce children to those cultures, because they grow up knowing these, that they're, they're just not isolated. I went to the Family Justice Center, they're a very worthy organization, they support all the victims of crimes in various ways, and the city is a sponsor, and so we were happy, the three of us, to represent. Poor Councilmember Schaefer was not feeling well, so he couldn't go, he would have. Went to the, to the Hoover-Nilo meeting, and it was, every chair in this room was full, and what Councilmember, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor Taft says is true, we should, we used to have meetings that were full in our chambers, but people cared about what was going on around them, but I'm not sure how they get their information now, they should come here and get it firsthand. Maybe the neighborhoods could have a, a thing where they, you know, get the people to attend, that would be nice. And then I did, on Monday, I did Monday with the mayor as vice mayor, I filled in for absent former Mayor Daniels, and I just want everybody to know, that will continue throughout my mayorhood, and so on Monday mornings from 9:00 to noon, and David, you've been there, it's fun, you get a cup of coffee. We used to have muffins, totally got stolen. Anyway, we, we'll, we'll meet there Monday, it's like, some cities have, their councilmembers have office hours, and this is the best we could do. If I can't be there, I'll ask for other people to fill in, but you'll always have a voice there to talk to and bring up your problems that are sometimes difficult to do in this setting, so you can definitely come on a Monday morning between 9:00 and noon and, and I had a meeting with Chief Turkot, all of us do, I think it's wonderful that our chief extends quarterly or semi-annually meetings with all of us individually to find out, because we're the ear of the community, so if you have issues that you tell us about, we relay it to the police department, some of your concerns, so don't hesitate, we're the, the go-between sometimes between you and the next step up, also all of our wonderful staff that we relate if you have problems, and we, we forward your problems to the staff person that can handle it, and I really appreciate the chief reaching out to all of us, and we all schedule separate, so we don't know what all talks about from the other, because we don't violate the Brown Act, but it, it's appreciated that, that we have that opportunity to share. I couldn't attend the 9/11 thing this morning, because I went to the sewer board meeting, and to let you know, we didn't take any action, but we are, the Harvest Water Project doesn't affect us up here, because we're Citrus Heights, but we taken, treated water, tertiary-treated water that's cleaner than the water in the Sacramento River, and we're building miles, 40 miles of pipeline, various ways to get it down to farms in southern Sacramento County, and so that they don't have to drain the water out of the aquifer and out of the, the rivers, and they can use recycled water for their crops. And so I think it's just a wonderful project, and I will be going to Tampa, Florida for potential award that the district's going to be up for, for the Echo Water Project. It's the American Society of Civil Engineers, ASCE, and it's like a, it's like the, what do they call it, the Oscars, you know, the guys wear tuxedos. I bought a purse, I did, I bought, I bought a dressy purse. Going to have to look in the closet, though, if something's suitable, it's, it's a, just a couple nights, but I'll be back on the day of the council meeting, so if something happens and my plane is, is stuck, you'd be running the meeting. And other than that, I want to also, now that I hear what Councilmember Schaefer said, is, I, too, am not in favor of merging the neighborhoods. If Area 2 can't get people to, to participate, why would you want to prevent the future persons in Area 2 from organizing themselves and becoming their own individualhood? So, you know, I'm, been on the SOAR Board, I was SOAR president, and now Natalie Price is, and, and we think our neighborhoods should be smaller, not bigger, and so that people want to concentrate, you know, you get out, look on your front porch, and you look to the right, and you look to the left, and that's your neighborhood. It isn't down the street and around the corner and across the road and all the Sunrise Boulevard, that's not your neighborhood. So you, you really want to be in a neighborhood and feel up to it, you want to have, so we were thinking of like Lenny Hoods and the Mother Hoods, so we, we kind of don't think that neighborhoods should merge, and you lose your admin money, because you only get one admin money per neighborhood, not two of them, and so anyways, it is, it's like you say, there's just one city, city hood, yep. Okay, so I've said my piece, but that's up to them, and, and that's all I have. That's it for me. Next item, please, Amy.
Our next item is consent calendar items nine and 10.
Mayor, I would like to pull item nine for a separate vote.
Item nine is pulled for a separate vote. How about item 10? Does anybody want to move that one?
I'll move item 10.
Second.
It was a close second of that, so motion made by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by, I think, Mary Jane, Vice Mayor Taft. All those in favor of item 10?
Aye.
Aye.
Could you read item nine, please?
Item nine is the approval of the amendments from the August 28th City Council meeting.
For a separate vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain?
Aye. Me.
Portia abstains. She's abstaining because she was absent. You feeling better?
Yes.
Good. But she was sick. Okay, that takes us through consent. Next is a public hearing.
So next item, public hearing, number 11, the subject is zoning code updates, and the recommendation is to move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15061B3 of the Guidelines, and to introduce for a first reading, read by title only and waive the full reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, which is the zoning code section.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Casey Kempinari, Community Development Director tonight, joining Stephanie Louie, our Assistant Planner. The zoning code update is something we do annually to generally clean up or adjust for laws that have changed, and really try to keep it as user-friendly as possible, and you'll find that Stephanie's presentation tonight, she'll cover, the couple of things are pretty routine, we're just reorganizing, making it for user-friendliness. There is a, a bigger change, and we kind of brought it ahead of, of some of the other work that we're planning on doing with Director Hoover's office in terms of economic development lens to our zoning code and, and other planning documents. We're planning on, early next year, bringing forth, or she is planning, an economic development strategy, which the zoning code will, update will dovetail in, with the lens on making things more user-friendly and, and less duplicative and streamline processes. So we had an opportunity, it was brought forth to us to look at one particular area, which is our alcohol-related regulations, and we found a lot of duplicateness, and we thought it'd be easy to clean it up right now instead of waiting, and it will help out some of the, some, potentially some of the vacancies we have to allow an alcohol, in this case, there's a high-end bourbon shop that'd like to come in, and there was some of our regulations, we're making that, so it would not be able to happen. So by making this change, we, we add some flexibility for alcohol-related uses, while also still protecting our local control, and Stephanie will walk through some of that, making sure that we still have a PCN process and operational standards to ensure that any alcohol-related uses that come in are still being good neighbors. So with that, that lens, I'd like to turn it over to Stephanie to kind of walk you through the zoning code update.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Like Casey mentioned, my name's Stephanie Louie, and we'll be going over a brief presentation on the 2024 zoning code updates. So just to refresher, I want to explain how the general plan and zoning code are related and what their purpose is. The general plan acts as a guide for the city's future development, and this is through goals, objectives, policies, and actions. The zoning code implements these items in the general plan, and this is by outlining standards and providing regulations for uses allowed in the zoning designations. The zoning code also regulates items such as building design, setbacks, height, landscaping, among a number of other items. So why do we update the zoning code? So the zoning code is updated annually, and this is usually to address items for compliance if there are changes in the state law. It also is updated with factors including economic development or newly adopted strategic goals. It also allows for modifications of our sections that are needed just to enhance and clarify and make the zoning code a little easier to navigate. So with this update, the Planning Commission reviewed the zoning code changes on August 13th. It was recommended approval for this portion of the zoning code. Included in that bundle that was presented to the Planning Commission was a section for changes for recycling. That section will not be presented tonight, but will be brought forth to council on September So just as an overview, like Casey explained, most of this year's changes just include modifications or clarification, just to provide an easier document to read. There are some items that experience some notable changes, those include accessory dwelling units, parking, and then our alcoholic beverage sales and convenience store section. For ADUs, we added a setback requirement for second-story balconies. This was due to an increase of resident inquiries for balconies and rooftop decks. The code existing, the code, sorry, has existing standards for second-story windows, we just didn't have standards for balconies, so we added a 10-foot setback to the rear and the side for ADU second-story balconies, and this is consistent with what's existing with two-story additions for single-family homes. The changes in the parking section, there are no new regulations that were added, most of this was just an unbundling and clarifying just existing standards, just to make it easier to read. The most notable change to the zoning code comes with the changes made to the alcohol beverage sales and convenience store section. These changes were made to eliminate duplicative processes when it comes to review of alcohol uses. It also retains the city's discretion for review through the PCN process. So with that, we're just going to dig a little deeper into the alcohol beverage sales changes. I wanted to go over what our current process is and how the proposed changes eliminate overlapping review of applications when it comes to our current use permit requirements, and then when it comes to ABC's current review process. So alcoholic beverage sales are already highly regulated, and the city's use permit process overlaps with what ABC already reviews. We've noticed that our current regulations have limited potential economic opportunities within the city's commercial zones. Our hope is that these changes will streamline the application process, and then again, eliminate the need for repetitive review. So with that being said, our existing process typically requires alcohol uses to comply with three types of review. These include a liquor license review and issuance by ABC, a letter of public convenience and necessity by City Council, and then a use permit by the Planning Commission. All alcohol uses with our current regulations require at least two of these reviews, some of them require all three. We found that a lot of these processes are repetitive material, and the cost and time has discouraged possible economic opportunities for applicants and in the city. The proposed amendments to the code were made to help streamline the application process and then eliminate the need for some alcohol uses in projects to go through all type, all three types of these reviews. So again, the proposed changes would eliminate the need for a use permit in most situations. This was done by eliminating our distance requirements for on-sale and off-sale alcohol establishments. for on-sale and off-sale alcohol establishments. This doesn't mean that distance requirements to places like schools or churches are no longer reviewed. They are still reviewed by ABC's process. This would just eliminate the need for repetitive review with ABC's regulations and then the city's review with the use permit process. And then to further clarify, a review of alcohol sales by the city is not fully eliminated by these changes. In most cases, city council's approval of a letter of public convenience and necessity will still be required by ABC. And then a PCN is required due to an over-concentration of alcohol licenses within a census tract. Currently, the city of Citrus Heights has 22 census tracts. 16 of those are over-concentrated with alcohol licenses. So those would still require PCNs if there's an alcohol use that is being proposed in those census tracts. And so the remaining six that aren't over-concentrated are primarily zoned residential, so alcohol use would not be allowed in those regardless. So it is good to note that a PCN allows for city council to have a broader discretion over proposed use rather than the typical use permit process. And so we still allow for review of these types of projects. So what happens if an alcohol use does not need a use permit and it does not need a PCN? Well, ABC still reviews applications and considers their proximity to sensitive uses. This also includes review of police records, public nuisance, and that's all within the proposed location for alcohol. And on top of that, the city still has the ability to protest any ABC license requests submitted to ABC. So along with the proposed changes, with the elimination of the distance requirements, we've proposed a set of operational requirements. These changes include specific hours of operation as well as increased security measures. The hours of operation are consistent with the existing regulations for brew pubs and convenience stores. With the elimination of a use permit, establishments agree to these operational standards. If they want to propose extended hours of operations, then a use permit will still be required. These operational requirements are put into place to provide an appropriate level of protection for the city, and they still allow for future economic opportunities. And again, these changes don't fully eliminate review of alcohol uses. The intent is just to eliminate repetitive and excessive review. With that, a letter of support was provided by Kathy Lynn Carpenter on behalf of Sunrise Marketplace. And a letter was provided on your dais by a local real estate broker in support of these changes. This would hopefully help provide the opportunity to allow for more business opportunities within the commercial centers in our city. And these are the recommended motions. Casey and I are available for questions.
Let's start with questions. Save comments until we open the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions of staff? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I do have one speaker sheet. Sheri Merrick, please.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and city council members, city manager, and staff. I wanted to make sure that I came and voiced a support of this because I know that economic growth is very important to our city to make sure that we thrive. And by trying to restrict the duplication process and the increased cost of what the current process is puts on someone trying to open up a new business here in Citrus Heights, I think would be very good for our city, and it would help our business community immensely. So I would ask that you support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, comments? Does, Portia, any comments? Mary Jane, any comments? Any comments? I just want to say thank you so much for doing this because we don't want to be known as the city who has more red tape than we need to have. And since we are trying to attract more breweries, because we do love our breweries, it'll be easier. And I appreciate the businesses giving their input to this. And we didn't receive anything in opposition to it. So with that, I will close the public hearing unless there's anyone else wants to come up and say any words. Then I close the public hearing. Anybody, motion one?
I'd like to move, motion one. Move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under section 15061B3 of the guidelines. And, do we need to do that separately? Okay. So that's my motion.
Who said second? Motion made by council member, what's your name?
Schaefer.
Schaefer. I think I wake everybody up. And seconded by vice mayor, Mary Jane Taft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Which passes unanimously. How about motion two?
Motion two, move to introduce the first reading. Read by title only and waive the full reading of ordinance number 2024 as shown in attachment one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights amending various sections of chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, zoning code section.
Second. Motion made by council member Schaefer, seconded by council member Middleton. And I just want to say before we take a vote, this does not include the section on recycling. So if you go to the city's packet and you look at this staff report and the, the, attachment one is all of our zoning code updates, but it also includes recycling. That will be a separate item at a later date. So with that, motion two moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None? All those in absent, I mean abstained? None. So we're good. Motion passes. I think we got everything. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 12 on the regular calendar. The subject is approval of Economic Development Support Fund grant request by the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a $25,000 grant to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce for the economic, from the Economic Development Support Fund.
Good evening, council. I'm Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. Council has considered this item and approved it for well over a decade in various forms. It is our annual partnership with the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. In over a decade, the city of Citrus Heights has served as a top-tier sponsor, which gets privileges in marketing and promotion and cosponsorships across the board, which we appreciate. And then a handful of years ago, we added a second component to this request to help cover the costs of renting the Citrus Heights Community Center in order to host chamber monthly luncheons. This has definitely proved to be a huge benefit in that they were previously hosted outside of city limits, and this allocation allowed us to bring it inside of city limits. You'll find one additional component this year of this request, and that is a third request to help the chamber relocate to a more prominent and visible office space in our Sunrise Marketplace. So in total, this request is $25,000 through our Economic Development Support Fund. It has been approved by, reviewed and approved by the Quality of Life Committee, and it's here before you this evening. Staff recommendation is full approval. And we do have a short presentation for you as well by the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. And at this point, I would like to invite Sheri Merrick up to the podium.
Once again, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, city council members, city manager, and thank you, city staff. So most of you know me, know that I was a part of the Folsom Chamber of Commerce for over five years. I was serving as their COO and gained extreme amount of knowledge by working with that very successful chamber. And I'm happy to say that I've been able to bring that knowledge here to Citrus Heights. I'm very excited for the future of our business community here in Citrus Heights. I do want to state some of the things that we've been able to accomplish in my six months of being here. Yes, it's only been six months. Might feel like five years already, but it's only been six months. One of the things is in 2023, we had a net growth of 17 new members join our chamber. As of August, the end of August, we've had 52 new members join this year. And we are continuing that trajectory. And I believe that, as Megan had mentioned, us having a more prominent location will only benefit that growth. So this is a list of the new members to date. We've got some really great people that had been a part of our organization that left, unfortunately, and now they have returned back. They've seen that, you know, leadership has changed, and maybe we are taking things in a positive direction. So they've wanted to realign their businesses with our organization. We do have our same programs that we've had in the past. However, we have added additional programming. We do do a squeeze of the week where we will highlight one of our chamber members to just give them a little bit of extra love because we love our members so much. We don't just hug them, we give them a squeeze. We also do our business crush, which is where we invite all of our membership to come and congregate at one of our local businesses to show them some support, especially if they might be challenging, having challenges, and they just need a little bit more love, a little bit more exposure. We're doing that. And then I'm happy to state that next year, we are going to be adding a couple of new components. One of those is going to be our Access Citrus Heights Luncheon. That is something that I want to bring to our business community, where our business community actually has access to the leaders in not only our city, but our region and our state. I feel it's very important for business owners to be able to talk to the leaders that are making decisions that are affecting their business. So that will start in January. We will also be working later on this year with junior achievers. We are trying to bring an exciting new entrepreneur program to our youth, where we are going to reach out to our high school and get people to participate and tell us what kind of job or what type of business they would like to have open in the spring of 2025. We want to hold a Shark Tank type of an event where those students will be able to come and pitch their ideas. And whoever is the winner, they will actually get an investment from the event. And then hopefully, Junior Achievers is doing this around the region, and then our winner will be able to go to a regional level and compete as well. And then one big thing that I really am excited about, especially, I'm seeing the need for it during this election cycle, is I really want to bring back leadership Citrus Heights. We had a leadership Folsom, and I was a graduate in 2023 and found it extremely invaluable to actually be able to learn what it takes to run a city. And I feel like by having that, it will reach out to our younger generations and let them know, hey, if you don't get involved, we're not going to have a city council in the future. So I really want to start that hopefully in the fall of 2025. That is my goal. So very excited to introduce these new programs. We also incorporated a brand-new membership platform. It's called Growth Zone. This allows every single one of our members to have access on a back end to basically have a mini website within the chamber's website. They can add their photos, they can add logo, they can add video, they can add keywords. If they have a special, they can add it to our zesty chamber promos. If they have a job opening, they can post that to our job, community job board that will be living on our website. If they have an event, they can actually submit their event to our calendar website, or our website, calendar on our website. So this just will allow more benefits to chamber membership other than, well, you have to attend an event in order to feel like you are benefiting from being a part of the chamber. Also, I've worked very hard to continue my strategic partnerships that I grew over in Folsom. I've now spilled them back over here into Citrus Heights. I do sit on the SMUD Businesses Advisory Council. I've been able to speak at one of our local neighborhood associations. I meet twice a month with our Economic Development Director, Megan Huber. I have collaborated with several of our neighboring chambers, and we will continue to do different joint events. And I'm hoping to have those here in Citrus Heights. We will be actually hosting the November Power Luncheon here in Citrus Heights at our Olive Garden Restaurant, so I'm very excited about that. And then I've got a great relationship with Sunrise Marketplace. Kathy Lynn has been tremendous, a tremendous help in identifying a potential location for the move. And it is in the same center that Sunrise Marketplace is currently located. Currently, I don't know if any of you have ever come to the chamber office where we are currently. We are set back off the road behind another building. We are on the second floor with no elevator. No one can find us. The first two months, every person that tried to come see me got lost. So that's why I'm pushing very hard for us to relocate. And unfortunately, we haven't, in my little six months, have not grown enough to be able to handle the increase in rent and utilities and whatnot. So we're hoping that we can get your support. We also have a brand-new website that is under development. I feel like by putting a more professional foot forward out there on the internet, we'll only attract better businesses to our community, wanting to be invited, involved in our, in our community. This will also become ADA compliant. Currently, the way that our website is, it is not ADA compliant, the American Disabilities Act. It does not meet the requirements. So that's one of the other reasons why we wanted to build a new website. And then our marquee events are still happening. We have our community awards event that we did in March. Next week, hope to see you all there at our Best of Citrus Heights award celebration. We had almost double the amount of votes cast this year than we did last year. Over 7,000 votes were cast. So we're pretty excited about that. And then we had our elected officials reception. I did see some of you at that event. It was amazing. Great turnout. We had representation from all of our elected officials, say one. So that was a great event. And I love being back in this community. We, I have tried to make it out to all the things that I can possibly make it out to. I love the community of Citrus Heights. I feel like this is, this is the working-class community, and they all look out for each other, and I absolutely love that. And I love being a part of this community. I was a big part of it 15 years ago and went away. And now that I'm back, I'm more than delighted that I am back. So with that, this is hopefully the impact that having a brand-new office space can, can, you know, just help our community, business community grow. I feel like if they can't find me, how are they going to know that we're there? So I really want to make sure that we have a good presence and just continue to work with our business community, keep them engaged, keep them thriving so that our whole city thrives. So with that, thank you very much for your consideration.
When do you think you'll move into your new building?
Hopefully, January.
Any questions, comments?
Yes. This is a very robust plan, and I'm so glad to see that within six months, you've really identified some really key and critical issues, and you're more than willing and capable to take them on. So congratulations again, and thank you so much for like taking our chamber, dusting it off, and really pouring some love into it. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Do you feel the energy? I think our community has been waiting for you, and it shows how much you do care about our community. The creativity you bring to us, the way you have branded and rebranded our entire organization, the chamber, to be its own entity and things that magnetize our business community is incredible. I know you have heard over the last few events I know you have heard over the last few events that you've done that they're all elevated. The only way you can really understand that is if you go to one of the events, you'll know that it's very different from events held in the past. And so, thank you, thank you for doing this and your future work for our city. I really believe, and I've always been a huge proponent of economic development for Citrus Heights, I believe that our city has incredible energy and we are poised just at the edge of just bursting open with economic development and attraction for businesses. And you are another piece, Sheri, to that puzzle, and I really appreciate you coming to us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Bring it on, Tim.
All right. So, so first few years I was in council was ten thousand a year. Last year, it dropped to seventeen thousand. Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Rent.
What's that?
Rent.
Rent. I get you. No, I'm kidding. I just really, I'm excited for this. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit interested, self-interested in that, how many of your members have actually rented space at the community center? Are we getting some, are we some reciprocating business here?
I definitely know that you are because I've had businesses tell me that they're holding this event there or that event there. So I do know that chamber members are definitely...
You've got to share the love a little.
Yes.
That's all I'm asking.
Oh, for sure. Most definitely.
We'll get you the twenty-five thousand if you could, spread some love with the community center.
Oh, trust me. I talk about how great the community center is. You know, I came from Folsom. Their community center is seventy-five years old. This one's gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. So trust...
You're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really, I just wanted to give you a little...
Just wanted to turn my stomach a little bit.
Well, my observation is, is that Director Huber and you and Economic Development have, like, high-speed roller skates. You kind of, you kind of scoot everywhere, get so much done, high-energy, it's just very catchy, too. So with your energy, I got to believe that's why you have fifty-seven new members. I want to thank the City of Folsom for letting you over here. And then I want to thank you for finding that second floor. He's got a question now. He wants to interrupt me because...
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Go ahead, ask a question.
You always get the last word, and that's a good thing. So who teaches your leadership? Who's going to teach your leadership?
I'm going to be leaning on past leaders in our community and maybe even you, Tim.
Okay.
Well, that was one of my questions.
We need, so in Folsom, it was city council members, it was city manager, it was, everybody participated. So, and the final class, we did a mock city council meeting, and we played parts, and I was vice mayor.
And Jeannie Bruins was the founder of our leadership program.
Right.
So you might want to...
Oh, for sure.
Find her and get her to pee on your committee.
She definitely is on my list.
I had another question. I really like your Shark Tank idea. And if you are looking for sponsors for that event, for maybe, you know, adding maybe an extra kid or whatever...
Yeah.
Would you talk to me? Because our neighborhood association sells fireworks in front of Panera's every year, and we have some money we can help with that event.
Awesome. Wonderful. Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And let's see, what else? Oh, and I wanted to let you know ahead of time that I cannot attend the Best of Citrus Heights.
I know.
But if anything needs to be said, I will trust my vice mayor.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. And that's, let's do, anybody else got anything to question with a motion?
Okay.
Why don't you make the motion since you gave her the hardest...
I'll make the motion. Okay. I remove that we adopt a resolution 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights approving a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to the City of, to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Support Fund.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tapp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Greatly appreciate you.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving along to the next item.
Next item is regular calendar item number thirteen. The subject is ordinance of the city council relating to camping. And the recommendation, there's two options for city council consideration. The first is conduct the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Fifty, Article Three of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to camping, or discuss the proposed ordinance. And if the city council makes any substantive changes to the ordinance, conduct another first reading amending Chapter Fifty, Article Three of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to camping.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, distinguished members of council. I'm Lieutenant Wes Herman with Special Services Division, Citrus Heights Police Department. As Amy mentioned, I'm back tonight for a second reading. As you recall, from a few weeks ago, we were here presenting an ordinance amendment to our camping ordinance, Chapter Fifty of our municipal code. And during that presentation, council had some discussion surrounding passenger vehicles. There was also some discussion regarding what other rules are being enforced throughout the region, just from a consistency standpoint. And at the end of that discussion, council, you took action to exclude passenger vehicles from the ordinance, which we certainly can do. And if we are going to do that tonight, then this will be a second reading. But we did go back, staff went back and did some additional research, and we're bringing back some additional information for you to consider tonight. So as a reminder here, the expanded definitions in the ordinance update was to include vehicles. It was also to enforce unlawful camping, both on public and private property. Additionally, the new section with camping on private property was going to be limited to seventy-two hours with the owner's written consent, no more than three times per year. Again, this aligns with recent legal updates that went through the U.S. Supreme Court in the Grant's past decision. It also enhances public safety and reduces blight from unauthorized encampments and the public safety hazards that they pose. It is in direct alignment with our strategic goals, which was to preserve and enhance public safety. And there is no fiscal cost associated with this action. In fact, there probably be a reduction in cost from camp cleanups. So some of the additional information that staff researched was, following the last council action, there was the discussion of passenger vehicle. And this is a definition of a passenger vehicle from the California Vehicle Code, which is, of course, you know what we follow when we're doing our enforcement. And a passenger vehicle is a motor vehicle other than a motor truck, a tractor-trailer, I'm sorry, a truck tractor, or a bus, as defined in Section Two Thirty-three of the California Vehicle Code, and used or maintained for the transportation of persons. So much like you, probably, when you hear that, I read that, and sometimes we ask ourselves, what does that exactly mean? And so the term passenger vehicle also will include a housecar. As you know, the vehicle code, many of these sections were written many years ago. So what we did is we took some pictures after kind of dissecting the language and getting a specific definition. And so just for visual purposes, every single one of these vehicles that you see here may qualify as a passenger vehicle under the California Vehicle Code. And the reason I say may is that it oftentimes depends on additional factors. Is the vehicle for hire, which might make it then for commercial purposes? Does the vehicle hold over a certain number of occupants, such as in the case of a bus? And that might change it from a passenger vehicle to a commercial vehicle. And so it's not a clear-cut definition from a visual perspective for an officer to look at and immediately be able to tell whether or not that fits the definition of a passenger vehicle in order to exclude it. Additionally, there was some discussion regarding whether the vehicle was registered through the state of California, meaning licensed and insured. Again, both of those are oftentimes difficult to determine when you're simply driving by, looking to do enforcement, and might even open up the door for, you know, why are we contacting somebody in an off-site parking facility, which is private property, in order to determine whether or not they have valid license, registration, or insurance, which currently, there are other code sections that require that, and that applies to public roadways and not private parking. Additionally, there was some discussion regarding the regional consistency, if you will, both from a enforcement standpoint, but also for those who are trying to follow the rules. And in an effort not to make things confusing for them, I think you can see here that most of the other jurisdictions around us are consistently enforcing this no camping in vehicles. If we move forward tonight, we will be the exception to that rule. And so with that, I'll certainly take any questions, but as mentioned earlier, tonight, we're here to present two options for you. Again, we can conduct the second reading and adopt the ordinance, or we can make any substantive change that council would like to the ordinance and then conduct tonight a new first reading. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, do questions? Anybody have questions? And then I have three public speakers.
I do have a question.
Question.
Is there any way we could work this in to say vehicles, passengers...
Councilmember Schaefer, can you turn on your microphone?
Thank you. Passenger vehicles of nineteen feet in length or less.
It's certainly within your purview, Councilmember Schaefer, to do that. What we often like to do is try to use definitions that are from a standardized format. So it will, there are challenges that can come up if we start creating different definitions of vehicles that are outside of what we normally enforce, which is through the California Vehicle Code or penal code definitions.
I do have a question because I was not here for this very robust discussion that I watched on YouTube. The resolution, as it stands now, explain to me what it says. Do we allow for camping in vehicles?
We currently do, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Got it.
Any other questions?
I also have the same question. If you can tell us which option that you have on the screen here specifically includes passenger vehicles and excludes passenger vehicles?
So the first option would just be a second reading of last council presentation's action, which was to exclude passenger vehicles. So the first option there would be a second reading tonight to exclude passenger vehicles, and then thirty days from now, that would become law. The second action would open the door for you to make any additional amendments to what the current action is, and we could move forward with that if that received the vote as a first reading tonight, and then that would be back in two weeks for a second reading.
So the second option includes passenger vehicles as no camping?
It could, it could, ma'am, if you want to direct it that way. We didn't write it that way necessarily.
Originally, it was. The one that we had last, last time was, and then we added an exception.
Yeah. I simply took out the words, so not to tell you what your council action would be. But yes, that's, that is certainly an option, and to include passenger vehicles would then be consistent with what is being done in the rest of the region.
I'm going to call our three speakers up. I have three. The first one I have is, then we can take more comments if you have more comments. Louise McGuire, are you here, Louise?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that it's very difficult to find any housing. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I worked for forty-one and a half years and retired a year and a half ago in mental health. And most of our folks who are homeless are very, very difficult to place, and there's no housing for them. And I've tried for six months to place one person and had no success. They're not taking any more affordable housing applications. They're out of money in a lot of places, and I applied for United Way, and I'm still waiting on that for one person. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sally Fisher.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. I've been working with the homeless now for about five years, and as time's gone on, there are more homeless on the streets. Housing has become, over the years, more diminished, and now because of very expensive rents and fewer accommodations for the unhoused, we're running into a problem, we have actually a large problem in Citrus Heights. And there's nowhere to put these folks, and so what they have is their car. It's dangerous, they have vehicles, but we're specifically targeting cars right now. It is dangerous to be on the streets. I take care of three people specifically, and they have their, the unhoused people steal from one another. They steal sleeping bags, EBT cards, California IDs, their food stamps. I mean, they steal from one another. And then now we have this issue with the Citrus Heights Beautification Project, which is now allowing the police to confiscate what they have. So it's a real problem, and it's only going to get worse, and it's getting worse. I go out with St. Vincent de Paul on Thursdays, and we take lunches out to the homeless. And we provide toiletries, shoes, clothing, blankets, this type of thing, backpacks, sleeping bags. And we're seeing more and more people come in from other areas into Citrus Heights, and we're seeing more desperate and dire situations on our streets. So I'm here to just plead for them if you would kindly consider keeping the car, allowing them to stay in their cars, as an exception. So this is what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. And my third speaker is Alfred Sanchez.
Our new mayor, vice mayor, council members, members of staff. You already know how I feel about this. I spoke on it last week. But I'm going to thank Portia because of what she said earlier. She said, "The one thing that a lot of people don't really grasp is that this could happen to anyone." I slept in my car when I was younger, and I was managing a restaurant. I was like counting all this money that this restaurant was making, and just by chance, I just happened to be sleeping in my car. So that's, I'm apathetic towards people, but that's part of the, part of the reason that I'm so much of an advocate for them, because I know how it feels. The first thing that happened when I was sleeping in my car, people were telling me, "You're going to get in trouble." I was like, "Oh, my God, are you serious? Like, you're going to get in trouble for sleeping in your car?" They were like, "Yeah." And it's like, I went to sleep that night scared that I was going to have a police officer, you know, like, wake me up and give me a ticket, all this stuff. I was very lucky. A lot of times, it just takes that stars to be aligned, or those planets to be aligned, to get out. There's so many people on waiting lists. There's nine thousand people on the street. There's less than three thousand shelter beds. I even spoke with Sue Frost the other day, and she said, "There's just not enough to go around." So sometimes everything just has to fall into place. The only thing that fell into place for me quickly was I just happened to get my income tax return. That's the one thing that saved my butt, was that income tax return. And I was able... That's the one thing that saved my butt, was that income tax return, and I was able to get out of my car, and I was freezing. So, so I understand it, and, um, oh, okay, as far as RVs, uh, I looked at the vehicle code as best I could. You can't park them in the street anyways, so you can't do it. That, that goes without saying. Sleeping in your car, I mean, I believe that the California, uh, what's that rulebook says if you're tired to pull over and fall asleep, and that's all these people are doing. They're just tired. These are the people that are feeding you at restaurants. These are the people that are serving you. These are the people that are ringing up your groceries. And like I said last time, if you're maintaining your registration and your insurance and a car, I mean, you showed me a little bit more than just, you know, wanting to be a vagrant out there doing nothing for yourself. So I guess I'm begging you to keep that vehicle thing in place so that people can just get a good night's rest. If they are doing something wrong, by all means, I mean, you know, you have the discretion to say somebody is creating a nuisance. That's, these, these are already things that are in place. You have the, you have the ability to say, "Hey, you know, this, you can't do this because it's wrong. It's creating a public nuisance," if somebody is. But I, like, you know, I talked to, I'm going to visit with over seven thousand people in the next year individually, and it breaks my heart. I mean, I mean, I go to, I go home and cry. So all I'm asking is for this one thing, just let them sleep in their car, and I got, I got one minute left. I guess I could do a little happy dance or nothing, but I don't think that would change anything. Congratulations on your appointments, and good seeing all of you, and I'm out.
Thank you, Alfred. Chief, are you back there?
Yeah.
Can you address that like you did before so that the audience and then everybody hears your?
Michael also raised his hand. Michael Logmasino also raised his hand.
Michael, do you want to speak?
Yes, if you've got one, real quick.
Okay.
I'll fill out a sheet.
Chief after Michael. Okay. Michael, you'll fill out a sheet and give it to, okay.
I'll fill out a sheet before I leave. My name is Michael Logmasino. I've been a member of the city for the last, well, since nineteen seventy-eight, and as most of you know, I've attended the city council meeting. Tonight, you have before you a choice. Here's my problem with if you decide to allow vehicle parking. We would be the only city that allows it, and I'm just wondering if we're opening up the door for all the other people from all the other cities now saying, "Hey, Citrus Heights allows it. Let's move up there." So think about what you're going to do, and if you're going to do with this, if you're going to make this decision, be advised that I see it coming down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of council, Alex Turcot, chief of police. To recap kind of the discussion we had last week for, for the audience, I just want to make it clear with most of the statutes that are in the books, but especially including our administrative violations, this is not a mandate that officers must take action. This is a tool, much like the shopping cart ordinance or other ordinance that we passed, that would allow officers, if they have a complaint, or if they're proactively trying to deal with a hotspot issue, it would allow them the legal authority to make contact and correct that issue. So the other piece that we didn't discuss last time, administrative violations are held here within the city. So if an administrative violation, if you're going to argue that, it'd be like arguing a parking ticket, you could, you could write into the police department. We can weigh those facts and circumstances as well, and we'd have discretion in those cases, too. Also, to reiterate, with our enforcement of quality of life concerns, we do have compassion for those that are stuck living on the street, and I think it's absolutely true that anybody can be unfortunate, anyone can have the stars not aligned and have it become a problem where they find themselves homeless. I have personal family members and friends that have been homeless. We definitely have a heart for that. We've been partnering with our partners in the county to try to provide services when we do that. Our officers use their discretion in those cases. Much of the enforcement that has been going on around town has been for folks that have been offered services multiple times, or for those that frankly, it's not the, it's not the folks that are down on their luck, it's the folks that are, while in that status, are creating issues for the other members of the public. I understand, and we understand, unluck, being unlucky or being down on your luck, but it's our job to also balance the rights of the other citizens to quietly enjoy the city, move around and have access to services, walk down sidewalks, or to maintain their own parking lot in a status that is open for business and vibrant and make those things alike. So I think that's most of what we chatted about last time, but I'm happy to take any other questions.
Any questions for the chief? Questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Just so that they're on the record. I recognize that by doing this, it would put us out of alignment with other jurisdictions, and I would strongly encourage the PD to do what they always do, which is use the utmost discretion to make sure that we're treating individuals compassionately and ensure that they're treated with dignity. My biggest concern came in when I saw this come up on the agenda item, and I was sick, and I, you know, went back and reviewed, and I talked to some folks in our, in our communities. And, you know, we have churches who during COVID actually had, had parking lots where folks could park their cars safely and had a safe space. If we were to, you know, take this in a certain direction, that would no longer be allowed, right? And we want to make sure that people who are, they have a safe space to park their cars and sleep.
Can't they do it on private property with permission for seventy-two hours?
That's correct.
Up to three times a year?
Up to three times a year.
Yeah.
Per private property.
Restricted.
With written authorization.
Yeah, it's restrictive.
Well, I, can I?
And.
I'm sorry.
Also, I've also talked to local labor groups who have members who work forty hours a week, who are part of this community, and they have members who, you know, have minimum wage jobs, and they, they sleep in their cars because they can't afford to do anything else. I just want to make sure that we all know that this is a very difficult decision. It's very, it's going to be very hard for us to find a way to balance that, but I have full faith and trust that our police department cat, will continue, as they always have, to find that, find that balance.
I'm going to piggyback before we go to the other council members is that the last time, I was the one that brought up the passenger vehicles, because I slept in my car for probably two years off and on, you know, in different private, public. It was tuition, rent, tuition, rent, sleep in the car, tuition. So I was the one that brought that up, but the chief assured me that if he saw a student, I had a day job, and I still couldn't, it was tuition. So if, if the chief saw an honest-to-God person sleeping in their car because they were tired, their wife kicked them out, whatever reason, whatever reason, I, I'm sure you sit there, say to the policeman, "This is why I'm sleeping in my car," and I think that our compassionate police department is enough for me to trust them. And like you said, if he does an administrative citation, then that citation can be appealed, and, and you go and say, "I was just sleeping in my car because, you know, I, for whatever reason." So I, I trust the police department, and I think if it gets to where it, it's not that way, we'll be able to do something about it. So if we get complaints from the, from the people that say, "All I was doing was sleeping in my car," you know, I, I trust, I trust our police department to be compassionate.
Exactly what I was saying, yeah. They will continue to do what they've always done in this community.
So with that, I didn't really, wasn't really in favor of the amendment to include the exception, but it went.
I have a question.
All right.
So can you back, go back to the slide that lists all the, the cities that, so do any of these cities actually have definitions of a camping facility, and do any of those camping facilities include a vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, they do. There are some cities that do include a vehicle as a camping facility.
As a matter of fact, a lot of these have been that way for quite some time. We are, we were the exception.
Hmm, okay. So what is their, what do their ordinances look like? How would you, is there a way that we can sort of, what is, why don't we just adopt at Folsom and Roseville and Rockland? What do they, are they doing essentially this? Is it, they're doing the same thing as we are?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
Want to say something? Okay, I think that's it. We have, uh, what do we, what's the pleasure?
I'm ready.
I'm ready to make a motion.
For the first, the first option or the second option?
So the first option is what is our current, is that we currently have it?
Excludes passenger vehicles.
Excludes, so I, so I'm going to go with option two.
Excludes passenger vehicles.
I do not want to exclude passenger vehicles for the reason of, I don't want to include a motorhome because a motorhome is considered a housecar. I, I can't in all good conscience condone a bunch of motorhomes parked along the side of the road. So I'm going to make a motion to make substantive, uh, I just, I would want to simply remove the exclusion for passenger vehicles. Is there, is, is that the second one?
Ryan, you can help us out.
Oh, that, that would be the first reading, and I think it's now clear what it is. Basically, it's the language that was originally presented to the council at the last meeting. So this will be the first reading, as Lieutenant Herman mentioned, and if it passes, we'll bring it back in two weeks for the second reading.
Okay, so that's, that's motion, the first motion that I see here.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
No. It's actually the second motion, but that's the one I think you started to read.
Okay. So, so it's the second one on the page, so make substantive changes, but, okay.
If, if I may.
Thank you.
I, I took out some language here because I just didn't want to direct council with specific wording if you were going to choose something different, but if we were to add back in, make substantive changes to the ordinance, including passenger vehicles, and then you continued reading it as, as is, I think we would.
What he said.
Yeah.
I think you have to say it, though.
Oh, I got to say it, though?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so help me one, one more time with that.
You, you actually can say, piggyback on what Lieutenant Herman said, which is, "I'm going to make substantive change," or look, pick what I'm about to say. Substantive changes to the ordinance and conduct the first reading with the change being that the exception for the passenger vehicles is, is being removed.
Okay, fair enough. All right, make substantive changes, making a motion, making substantive changes to the ordinance and conduct the new first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four, amending Citrus Heights Municipal Code, chapter, chapter fifty, nuisances, removing passenger vehicles from this ordinance, Article Three, Camping, Sections fifty dash five hundred dash fifty dash five oh eight. Does that work?
I think so. It kind of sounded like you were saying we were accepting it. I think what we're saying is we're removing.
We're removing it.
I know it's a double negative, but yes, removing the exception for passenger vehicles.
All right, let's try it one more time. I make a motion to move substantive changes to the ordinance, removing, uh, passenger vehicles, and conduct the new first reading of, of ordinance number twenty twenty-four, amending Citrus Heights Municipal Code, chapter fifty, nuisances, Article Three, Camping, Sections fifty dash five hundred to fifty dash five oh eight.
Okay, the exception is being removed.
Because there are other changes. There are other, there are other changes to the ordinance, so we got to keep those other changes in.
Okay, all right.
Right.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, is there a second? You know what, you're having a second. Is there a second? Second, Mary Jane?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Vice Mayor Lopez Taft. Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, good. We're all in favor. Unanimous.
Yeah.
Okay. We have another item.
We do. It's a really complicated one.
The next item is regular calendar item number fourteen. The subject is designation of voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And so before the council tonight, there's two items for consideration. The first is to make a motion to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates to participate at the annual business meeting on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, during the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And then the second item is to review and give direction on the proposed twenty twenty-four Cal Cities Resolution that will be presented during the annual business meeting. And just to briefly highlight for the council, the resolution that has been presented by the California League of Cities is a call upon the governor and the California legislature to enact laws that ensure that what applies to one applies to all. A, a copy of the resolution has been, been provided in the city council's packet, and the resolution did cite some examples of rules limiting authority or regulating the conduct of local municipal officials that do not also apply to elected officials, and those are contained in the resolution. So basically, the resolution calls the governor and the legislator to adopt the following policy. The California State Legislature shall not enact, and the governor shall not sign into law any law or regulation that applies solely to elected officials of California cities and counties unless such law or regulation also applies equally to members of the California State Assembly and Senate. This prohibition shall not apply to laws or regulations affecting the inherent powers of the legislative branch under the California Constitution. And so with that, before you is to make a motion designating voting delegate and up to two alternates for the business meeting, and then consider the resolution and determine a city position so that the voting delegate can represent the city's position. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. Do you have a question?
I have a question. So you are, Portia, Councilmember Middleton is a member of Cal Cities.
Yes.
As is Jane, are you also involved with Cal Cities?
I think she's been active. You're, you're active, right?
I'm active, but I'm not.
Technically, we're all.
Active, but not an officer.
We're all members. I'm just an officer.
But you're.
Absolutely, I cannot.
You cannot.
So you cannot, so.
No, because I have so many other things I have to do while I'm there, like lead the president's meeting.
Can you be an alternate?
Well, no, I can't vote. I'll be in another meeting.
Oh, oh, oh.
You guys have to show up this time. Come on.
I showed up last time.
Any, well, any volunteers?
Mary Jane would like to volunteer?
I'll do it. Yeah.
Okay, then I'll make a motion. We designate Mary Jane as our voting delegate.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mary Jane, say aye.
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 Now we need two alternates.
I, I make a motion that Mayor Karpinski-Costa and Mayor Schaefer, I mean, Councilmember Schaefer are, are two alternates, because.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do it. Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 That passed. Now, who wants to explain? This resolution is like.
Oh, you want to explain it?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Please.
So this is specifically about the two hundred and fifty dollar limit that applies to council members and county board supervisors, but not to our state legislature. So, you know, what's fair is fair. It applies to one, it applies to all.
I thought maybe it would apply to ethics, you know?
I, I like it because it, it's going to go beyond what you're talking about.
Well, I mean, of course.
And, and I, I like the fact that they have to adhere to the very same rules that we do when it comes to contributions. So I, I would move to make the motion as stated here and as stated by Councilmember Middleton.
I'll second that, and Mary Jane would send have to, if it passes, Mary Jane would have to vote as what we say, right? Is that how that works?
That's how it works.
Then I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you get your marching papers, Mary Jane. But all we have to do as alternates is just be there?
Yes.
Okay, it's kind of moral support?
Jane gets locked in the bathroom, so I don't know. Yes, just be there.
Okay. I wanted to know what our role was, you know?
I'm not doing that either, but.
I've never gone to a business meeting.
You're going to love it. It's going, it's a lot of fun, and, and we have good food.
Food?
Food.
Ooh. Food.
All right, next.
Next item?
Thinking.
The next item is department reports, and we have none. The next item is city manager items.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor Dr. Karpinski-Costa, Vice Mayor Lopez Taft, members of council. Ashvenier, city manager, I do have a few updates for you tonight. Just some upcoming events, but first of all, I also want to recognize the great event at Sullivan Cemetery today that was memorializing and all those that perished on September eleventh, two thousand and one, so. And also just, you know, honor and always have in our hearts and thoughts all the first responders that serve our community. Getting to some fun that's coming up. Battle of the Bands, that's going to be hosted on Saturday, September fourteenth. Barbecue, beer, wine. Barbecue, beer, wine, music, booths. This is for our American Legion Post 637, our Citrus Heights post. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's an event that people have loved in the past and happy it's happening this year. It's at the Rush, Historic Rush House at Rush Park. And so that begins at, there's a lot of information on this flyer, but I believe it begins at 11:00 a.m. and goes till 3:00 p.m. So I encourage the members of the community to be there. It's for a great cause, supporting veterans. We also have our very own police chief that's going to be at the Citrus Heights Chamber Luncheon. This is on Tuesday, September 17th. It will be, no doubt, a great talk, and we're looking forward to having him as a guest speaker for the chamber. So get your tickets. It's also sponsored by Citrus Heights. Coming up, we have the Best of Citrus Heights. You heard about that tonight from Sherri Merrick, and that is going to be on Thursday, September 19th, from 5:30 to 7:30. Sounds like there's been some very robust voting, so we'll look forward to seeing who the winners are. And that's at our own community center. And Sunday Fun Day, September 22nd, from 11:00 to 3:00. That's at Rush Park. Lots of fun to be had there, and that will, again, be from 11:00 to 3:00. Food trucks, inflatables, Citrus Heights marching band, good times. And on more of a somber note, we lost Ruben Hernandez, our Senior Animal Services Officer. He was with us until September 1st of 2024. Definitely somebody that's left a major impact on many people in the community, many of our team members, and he was held in the highest regard within the region as a true professional, and somebody that had one of the biggest hearts you can imagine for the work he did in providing services to animals that don't have a voice, and reuniting a lot of people with their pets. So we're going to miss you, Ruben.
Next item, please.
The next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anybody have anything? I don't have anything. It looks like the next item is adjournment, and this meeting seems to be sandwiched between two tragedies, you know, the tragedy of 9/11 and the tragedy of losing Ruben. So in honor of Ruben, we adjourn.